I now call the Powhatan County Planning Commission meeting to order. Mr. Van Gelder will lead us in the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance and direction in our collective effort to be good stewards of the public trust, make fair and wise decisions, and keep Powhatan a wonderful place to live and work. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Good. I need to get approval of the March Planning Commission meeting minutes. I will be abstaining because I was not in attendance. Any amendments?
Yes, we've got a replacement page.
Okay.
But on the David Sowers private road request, Mr. Reynolds presented that and staff recommended approval, and that's not in there.
Okay. Do you all guy, Mr. Altman, have that amendment to make the correction? Any others?
No.
Okay. Then I will not make, can I still make the motion even though I wasn't here? Okay. I move we approve the Powhatan Commission meeting minutes for March the first meeting as amended. All those in favor, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and please note that I abstained. Moving on, Mr. Altman, anything noteworthy in the administrative items?
Not particularly.
Okay.
But I would say that, just to update you, the board took action on all the proffer cases at their March meeting and approved all of them on a three to two vote. They approved all of them on a three to two vote.
Okay, so three were four, obviously giving the proffer relief, two against it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we'll have some discussion in the workshop about a Senate bill that may change how we do it all anyway.
Okay.
The other thing, just for information, Mr. Sowers appealed that road, private road denial to the Board of Supervisors.
I'm sorry?
Oh, fine. Okay.
Mr. Sowers, the road, private road denial, he has filed an appeal with the Board of Supervisors.
Good.
When will that be heard by them?
Is it on the agenda?
We said, I think it's this month.
The end of this month.
Okay. Interesting. All righty. Anything else on the administrative items from you all? All right. We'll now have the public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak on anything that is not on tonight's agenda, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing there is no one, I will close the public comment period. We do not have any presentations, and I think we only have one public hearing tonight.
Yes.
So, Mr. Altman?
Catching up.
It's all you. Sorry.
That's okay. This evening we have one public hearing. It is a request submitted by, excuse me, Nathan Knuckles or Manage This LLC, and we did have an opportunity to resolve the ownership issue, and that property is now, as you know, at the last meeting, we have requested a deferral of this case for 30 days. The property is now listed completely on the ownership of Manage This LLC, and having the Commissioner of Revenue's office notified Mr. Smith of that correction and email correspondence that we, between he and I, he had indicated that, talking to his attorney, he wasn't going to challenge the ownership. So, the ownership issue was resolved, and we found out late last week that there was going to be no challenge. So, we're comfortable moving forward with it at this point in time, while it does still have him listed as owner on the staff report.
Okay, so that...
So that he is the owner, Nate?
Nathan Knuckles, Manage This LLC is the owner.
Okay.
So we can strike Carol T. Smith?
Yes. So the request was submitted by Manage This LLC to rezone the property located on the north side of Hancock Road. It is identified as parcel ID 30-14G and 30-14K. It's located at near the intersection with Darby Drive. The property is currently zoned A10. The request is to rezone the property to R2 residential two designation. The request would subdivide the parcel into two lots and then complete a lot line adjustment between Lot 14K to balance those lots out. Four lots, I'm sorry, four lots. I'm trying to slow down, pardon me, rushed from the Glen Allen High School soccer game, so just kind of trying to hear myself back down.
We have time tonight.
Yeah, unfortunately. So, four lots requested in the rezoning. There is, the applicant has proffered conditions to the, for the rezoning, and those conditions that the acreage remainder of tax parcel 30, parcel 14G would be combined with parcel 30, 14K to make a two-acre parcel. The minimum lot size of the dwellings on each of the parcels would be 1,500 square foot. There would be a maximum of four lots with a 3.1 acre average. The cash proffer that is being offered is $1,880, which is consistent with the county's current cash proffer policy. And the driveways for the lots would be located side by side, so Lot 1 and 2, while it's not a shared driveway, they would be co-located to each other along with 3 and 4 to minimize the road connections that we would have onto Hancock Road. Comprehensive plan designates the area for rural residential, and the, all the parcels would have road frontage, meet the minimum road frontage standards and a lot standard for the district. We have a minimum amount of school impact, whereas resulting of the rezoning, potential rezoning, which would be approximately four new students based on the way that we do our calculation. Reviewing agencies had no comments regarding the request, and staff has recommended approval of the request. Any questions of the commission? Staff would be happy to answer them. I believe the applicant is here this evening to present.
It was Darley Road, not Darby?
Darby, yes, sir.
Darley, D-A-R-L-E-Y.
Darley, yeah. That was my typo.
Would the applicant, would the applicant care to come forward and make a statement? Or the applicant's agent?
My name is Woody Kofa, Powhatan, Virginia. I'd like to have this approved based on staff recommendation, and I'll entertain any questions you have.
Okay. Thanks. We may have some. We're going to have the public hearing first.
Oh, okay.
We will now have the public hearing for this case. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Carol Smith, and I'm the previous owner of the said property in question here. And he was correct in his statement earlier that there will be no contesting of this situation. I have some EPA concerns. That property's been in my family for a little over 100 years, about 137 years now, and there's a spring there, and I was talking to Mr. Kofa a moment ago when I came in about my concerns. And that spring has been there for over 200 years, based on the information I've gotten throughout the family and what have you. The main thing is that I don't want to see it destroyed because it's a natural spring. My great-great uncle built a concrete tube, put down over top of it to secure it and fill it with peat gravel so it would filter through, and also built a milk box next to it, so when the spring ran, it would run, go through the milk box, keep the milk cool, and then it would also feed the creek behind it, which also feeds a couple ponds down the way. And my overall concern is, would be like anybody else's. You know, it's an increase in traffic. When you're building four houses over there, I asked the young man whether or not he took a time to walk the land, and he said he walked some of it, and I wanted to make sure that he realized what he was doing, because the land itself, in my opinion, and you know what those are like, in my opinion, will not lend itself to something substantial as a four-home dwelling. Two, possibly, yes. The terrain is very, very rough back in there, and that's why it was mainly used as the hog pen and horse field in the earlier years. That being said, as I stated before, my main concern is the EPA issues and whether or not they're going to be willing to work within the parameters of the EPA and maintain that little, that spring if nothing else.
Are you able to show us where roughly the spring is?
Ma'am?
Are you, are you able to tell us roughly where the spring is? Like, top left, bottom right, that kind of thing?
If you go to the 1.3, what is, here we go, 1.5 acres, come back to the, go down, I'm gonna say, where is, oh, there's a house right there. You see the house?
Above the acre mark there?
No, no, on the other side of the road. See the clearing where the cemetery is at?
Yeah.
See the cemetery?
Think so.
Okay, you see the house. If you come out that house and you hit Hancock right there at the driveway?
Oh, yeah.
You go down into, into there approximately, I'm gonna say, 30 yards, and it goes down into the bottom. And I see two clear spots that would be, would lend itself, conditionally speaking, would lend itself to construction, because I had thought about building myself when I was on the other side. But outside of that, you're gonna, you're gonna be moving a lot of dirt to make it accommodate what you're trying to do with four houses. In doing that, you're gonna have to destroy that, that spring. And that's a huge concern of mine, not just sentimentally, but environmentally also. Now, I'm on the other side in the, in the old farmhouse, which has been there for over 130 years, and that's what I'm living in now. And I'm the caretaker of the remaining 70 acres on the other side of the road.
On the other side of Hancock?
Yes, ma'am, where all that timber is at?
Yeah.
And all of that right there is where I'm at now. And I just recently had Mr. Kofa to survey off 10 acres going down Darley's side, and it's not, well, you could see part of it right there, where it's, my rod is directly across from the driveway on the other side of Darley, and it goes on back past the house in a corner, and then it goes on down Darley. So it's roughly 10 acres there. But like I said, I've been the caretaker for all of that property for, since 9/11, because that's when I came home to take care of my mother. And it's not out of negligence that this property went into foreclosure. I mean, it has nothing to do with this situation here, but I just want you to know that I had a letter of intent, and I had given that to my lawyer, and my lawyer tried to contact the people prior to Mr. Knuckles gaining ownership of it or buying it on the courthouse steps, but they stonewalled him and he wouldn't contact him, and then it ended up on the courthouse steps, so. But that's another issue altogether, and I'm not trying to bring that up, I'm just trying to give you a little bit of background to let you know that this is nothing that was done out of negligence, and I still have some concerns for it, because every morning when I wake up to go to the prison to work, I look across the road and I see what was. And that, that's, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you. I'm Terry Wagner, 1901 Hancock Road, Powhatan. I don't know very much about the rezoning process, so I have questions as much as some My first question, I think, has been answered. The staff report in one place showed two owners and another place showed one owner, but that's apparently been corrected. Throughout the document, after about page two of the staff report, I'm sure this is simply a typo, but you refer to Darby Road.
Yeah, it's a typo.
Darby Road. In the, in the third, in the executive summary, you talk about four two-acre lots, and then in the land use section, you talk about four lots that average 3.1 acres. So, and that's probably, I don't know that that inconsistency makes any difference, it's just, when I read it, I didn't understand it.
I think you'll understand when you hear the discussion afterwards.
And this is kind of a really weird question because I don't understand the process. What you're looking at today is a request to rezone two tracks to R2, which, my understanding, if it's rezoned to R2, that would allow two acre lots.
Mm-hmm.
So, the way I read the proposal or the staff report, you're starting off with 13-point-some acres in the big track. You're carving off a half acre of that to add to the little track, the 1.5 acre track, so it will become two acres, which will leave you with 12 and a half, 12.6 acres. My question is, if you, if you approve R2 zoning now, I understand that this process has proffers associated with it, but my question is, if, for whatever reason, the lots aren't developed now, 10 years from now, 15 years from now, the land changes hands, it's still R2, would the new owner have the opportunity to put six houses there instead of four?
No.
What would prevent that?
Yeah, he would, yes, no, he would not be allowed to put six houses there.
The zoning ordinance would prevent that.
Yeah.
So the, the proffers is really what prevents it?
No, the, what you zone it to. So he's zoning it to R2.
Right.
So he could put one house on two acres.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So, his proposal now is to put four homes there?
Correct.
If this proposal...
Because that's the maximum he could put on that with the average.
No, ma'am. With the average. All right, I'm lost again.
Okay.
R2, you could put one house per two acres.
Correct. And he has a total of 14.6 acres, right?
Well, if you can, once you, okay, right, 14.6.
So if he has 14.6...
Woody, would you?
And I would say...
Sure.
Yeah.
Woody can...
What it is...
Yeah, it would be 3.65, yeah.
This is a proffer statement?
Right.
Proffer, number three.
So this is what the maximum we can do. We got a maximum of four lots on the total.
Right.
Okay. Hey, Mr. Kofa, I'm sorry, we're gonna have to stop this. We can't do this. Okay. I think, sir, I think a lot of this will come clear with the whole discussion that's going to occur after this.
So...
He cannot build, with what he has proffered, he cannot build any more than that.
So the proffers carry forward in the zoning into the future?
Yes.
This reminds me very much of when Timber Mill was established, was rezoned, and, you know, the, the comment, and, you know, I'm removed from this property by one property. I have a 10-acre track. Everything around me is zoned A10. Timber Mill was zoned A10. At that point in time, which was, gosh, 20 years ago maybe, the comment that I got from my Board of Supervisor member and my commission member was, hey, it butts up against a two-acre subdivision, therefore, it's okay to zone it to two acres. When I read through the staff report, it seems that that's kind of the same logic that's driving this. If you really look at the, if you, if you look at the GIS coverage, this piece of property, the smallest lot that butts up against this piece of property is 5.5 acres. And, you know, I have sympathy for Mr. Knuckles, I mean, he's got a piece of property there, he wants to develop it, I understand that, but do we have to go to the lowest common denominator? Would it not be more reasonable to have two lots? That would be, I mean, I know it's not the proposal, but this is just my thought process. I don't, I don't understand why we, we have to go to two-acre lots. We go to two-acre lots on that piece, then the piece across the road. The next argument is, we go to two-acre lots on that, then I'm surrounded by two-acre lots.
Completely understand your concern.
And I think that's it.
Okay.
One other, just one other point real quick. In the comprehensive plan analysis, the, it's quoted out of the comprehensive plan that all future development in the rural residential area should follow the guidelines for conservation subdivision to cluster lots on the most buildable land and preserve large areas of open space and natural features to help maintain a country or rural character while allowing for residential growth. It's hard for me to see where taking an A10 and going to R2 satisfies that.
Yeah.
And that's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Kenneth Seal, 2050 Hancock Road, and I suspect we're the ones that have that five and a half acres adjacent to the proposed, or the property under question. We would be on the south side, in the illustration up there, where it says total acreage 14.5, those words is roughly our property. We, my wife and I would prefer not seeing four homes built on the aforementioned land. We would prefer a maximum of two, as he spoke earlier suggesting that, and we would suggest a minimum of, a maximum of two homes also in the developed property. We've experienced a lot of growth in the area, and when I go away to the driveway, you take your life in your hands, and that's past us, so it's just four more homes with probably two more vehicles, and I tippy-toe to the mailbox. But anyway, that's, we would prefer less than four, we would prefer a maximum of two, dividing the property in such a fashion to accommodate that. So that's our preferences and desires, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing there is no one, I will close the public hearing, and moving on, we will begin our discussion. Mr. Altman, after kind of talking to, listening to some of the citizens as well as myself, walk me through how you came to the R2 recommended zoning.
Well, one, that's what the applicant requested.
Okay.
So, I based my recommendation on looking at the adjacent land development pattern with the subdivisions in the area, the lot sizes along Hancock Road from Jude's Ferry on to this property, with the exception of a few that are above five, acre and a half.
Mm-hmm.
And that's how, as I went through it and looked at it, how I came to a comfort level with having the lots at the 3.1 average with the four lots.
How about the comp plan, comprehensive plan?
Well, I look at the comp plan, and as we've had this discussion, you weren't here last meeting, but the comp plan's a guy, so it's not definitive, and there is discussion in there with regard to having this property being rural residential, but there's also a discussion of having a transition from the village districts into this, into the rural residential area, which we don't have a transition in the, on the comp plan map in this area. So I, I understand what the comp plan says, I also understand it's a very good comment regarding the conservation subdivision. Unfortunately, we don't have that just yet because we didn't finish with the subdivision ordinance piece to get that done. It would have been nice to have that. But I look at the comp plan and understand what it says. I think that there's a transition that needs to be there. I think the existing land development provides that transition, and the proposal fits within that land development pattern.
Do you all have questions of the applicant or martred at the time?
I have, I have a number of things that...
Right, but we'll go to you next first. How about?
I just have one question about the spring. Is that, is that feed water to anyone? I'd like to know a little bit more about that, because when we talk about natural, natural assets to an area, I kind of like to know...
Mr. Kofa, do you know about the spring?
No, ma'am, but I'm not sure there's anything in the ordinance that says anything we have to put a buffer on the spring. We will be putting, it doesn't show up in here, but it will be a buffer on the creek and about it because it was an imminent string.
Is it common in a survey to have some of those features identified?
Not a spring, but what...
Even if it's feeding to ponds or as was...
I'm looking at natural, natural, I'll be honest, I'm not finding the right word, natural features that, you know, that we like to protect, and I just wanted to know more about the spring, you know, is this developed spring, it's been there for a long time, I'm just curious as to characteristics. I know nothing but what I heard tonight, and I don't know if we can have that.
That's what I was, Mr. Latchney, can I have the original landowner come back up? Okay. Mr. Smith, would you care to answer?
Yes, the spring, if you follow the backside of the property, okay, there's a pond further back, and it comes down, and then the spring, of course, runs down the back and around down into that creek. The creek itself is that property line on the backside of that property, and as you go across Gobbler's Ridge, it feeds a huge pond back there, and I'm thinking that pond is roughly about two and a half, three acres big. It's stocked with fish, I believe mostly brim, and maybe some perch. I haven't talked to that young man in a while. He's not a young man anymore, but it's been a while. So, does that answer your question?
It does, I just want to understand what it was about, that's all, and I think you did that, thank you very much.
Okay. And during, during my time there, I was very careful about not putting livestock down in that area for the simple fact that, you know, with the EPA rules and regulations, you know, you don't want that going downstream, feeding into a pond.
Thank you for answering my question.
Correct. Yes, thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay. Anything else from you guys? Okay. Mr. Cox?
I guess I'm just perplexed that this case is on our agenda. So, I'm going to ask the Planning Commission, if you will, to indulge me. Let me take you through kind of my thought process and the questions that I tried to resolve. As always, a few things for you to look at. Since the first thing it's got to deal with is our comp plan, the first thing you have is the existing land use, but behind it is a blow-up that shows you where this is located. And you'll see Hancock right behind that orange plat with teal. And Hancock, based on the existing land use, and this was the comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2010, is agricultural and rural residential all up and down Hancock. This piece of property is right where the C is on Hancock, and that road that goes underneath O and C and K is Darley Lane. You'll hear that more. So that's what the existing land use map says. If you go to the next one, the land, the countervoted land use plan where we were going in the comp plan, and behind that, once again, you have the blow-up of Hancock, and Hancock is rural residential. So, but I think one of the, one of the interesting things is, if you take both of those maps, Map Six and Map Seven, and set them side by side and look at them. Map Six, the existing one, looks like, something like a paintball game with all these little splotches all over the place, and that was called sprawl. And that was one of the things that the comp plan addressed head-on, was to pull in sprawl and to change it, and when you look at the land use plan, you see a much cleaner look at what the county, what we'd like the county to look like. Now, you can't do away with existing things, but it gives you the contrast, and what the comp plan was trying to do, which is rein in sprawl, the number one thing it went after in reining in sprawl is the R2 residential classification. Now, I'd like you to move on in your packet, and I'd like you to look at what is a table of contents for our old zoning ordinance, the one we used to use, the one that was replaced in 2014. And you see there's A1 district, there's intensive animal confinement, then your choices for residential development are rural residential, single-family R2, single-family R5, and R7, RU, and then it gets into the commercial ones. So that's, that's what the comp plan was faced with when we started making the changes. And we have two people who helped on this board who helped... And we have two people who helped on, on this board who helped push through the changes, Mr. Walker and Mrs. Carmack. And what they came up with is the next zoning ordinance table of contents, where you'll see a completely different look. You have rural districts, A twenty, A ten, animal confinement, the RR district, tried to get away with, do away with that, but it came, it came back to us from the board, R, R five, residential five, crossroads district, R two's gone. It doesn't exist. It is not an option for general residential development, period. It appears as part of the village growth area district, something very different and has a different use. And if you go to the zoning ordinance, and you read what it says, which is, for those who want to know, eighty-three ninety-two, the village growth area basestrikes district, and this is a village growth base district. Says the village growth area basestrikes, established in this article, were intended to establish within the village growth areas designated in the comprehensive plan, a compact pattern of urban and suburban development. Didn't that say anything about R two in the middle of the county? When you go to the actual zoning ordinance for R two, it has two hurdles that you must get over in order to use it. One, it has to have a specific location. It has to be close to a village growth district. This area, Hancock Road, is a little bit more than a mile from Old Church Road. And this piece of property is a half-
Which is the boundary of the village growth area.
And the, this piece of property is over a half mile from Jude's Ferry. If you start trying to figure out how far away it is, you're probably talking, I'm guessing, Woody could probably figure it out for us, somewhere in the neighborhood of one and a half square of miles, which is, which is close to a thousand acres. This is nowhere close to the village growth district. The new R two district shall be located in areas classified low density residential by the comprehensive plan. This is rural residential. But I want you to think about the term low density with R two. Where would that make sense? It wouldn't make sense next to A ten. It would be upside down. It wouldn't make sense R five. It's upside down. It only makes sense when it's next to, as you'll see on the next page, the growth area that we're talking about, where it's next to areas, village center areas that have up to four units per acre. That's when R two is low density. It is not low density when it's out in the middle of the county. Now, if you go to the next exhibit, this is Darley Road. This is a dump from the GIS system. What's on Darley Road? There are four two acre parcels. There are three that are three to four. There are two that are five acres, and there are three that are ten acres. Well, let's go to Hancock. There are forty-one pieces of property on Hancock. Less than two acres, there are thirteen. We have a lot of non-conforming lots in this county, as we're well aware. Between two and three acres, we have nine. Five acres, we have two. Nine acres, we have one. Ten plus acres, we have seventeen. I've highlighted the larger pieces of property on that list. There's seventy, Smith. There's a hundred and sixty-six, there's thirty-four, there's a hundred and forty-three. The R two zoning was jerked and prohibited from being used to keep these kinds of pieces of property from being developed. I guess, in summary, the comprehensive plan clearly does not support this zoning request. Because of the comp plan and the changes there, the zoning ordinance was changed to allow only, to allow RT only as a part of the village growth area. So the zoning area, zoning ordinance does not allow this zoning classification in the area that's being requested. Finally, consistency of lot sizes is not a criteria for rezoning, but if it was, the immediate neighborhood does not favor two acres zoning. I see no way to approve this, and I'm still surprised that it's in front of us because it doesn't meet anything that I think it should meet in order to be a proper zoning. Thank you.
Any comments or other questions?
I have a couple of questions for Woody.
Mr. Kofer?
Question, from March also.
I just want to make one statement before we get started, that I appreciate the speech that Mr. Cox gave, but I think he had an error in one part when he said next to, this property is next to an R one zoning, R, uh, Oak Grove subdivision, which is one and a half acre lots up to five and a half acre lots. So you might want to correct that. I know your zoning ordinance plat doesn't say that, but I rezoned in nineteen seventy-five for Mr. Donald May. And you go to court asking, check the records. Go ahead, Mr. Walker.
Well, you kind of answered one of my questions. Is this, any, any of this parent track, this fourteen acres?
Originally was, but it cut off seven acres in the back. Miss Smith gave to her son, uh, Goo, Mr. Goo. So she did a family thing for that. So this is not a parent track, no, sir.
Okay, okay, not a parent track, all right, that, because that's what I was getting at. All right, I'm gonna, I sit on a couple of comprehensive plan prior to this last one. And I can't remember the guy's name, but, uh, we, we, we were using boundaries to break zoning districts, and one of them, of course, is a road. But he indicated, this was a consultant, he indicated that a lot of times, it was better to use a stream as a boundary to break one zoning district to another. And we have a stream in the back of this, and I think that's a good place to break this from, there was, go ahead and do these lots R two, and everything behind it, the Humphreys, and all could stay with ten acre lots. And that's just the way I feel about it. And I'm assuming that there's about two hundred one acre lots in Chestnut Oaks in my right, and that's just right across the street. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this request, and I guess I'm gonna get beat up tonight, but that's all right, that's what I'm gonna do. Because we, we, we've amended the, the comprehensive plan land use map a penny times in the past. When we did this thing, you looked at that thing, I mean, that, that was, it should have included Chestnut Oaks in that, in that high density area, which it didn't. So, so anyhow, that's just my comments on it. And I think it's, we used to talk about the best use for a piece of ground, and this would be the best use. You've got all kind of things people have to go through before they build those four houses. And so I will support it, but.
But the priest's property has to meet the zoning ordinance, and it does not.
Mr. Van Gelder?
Yeah, I see you have fourteen point six X or plus or minus, is that right? Is that pretty accurate though? Is that as close as you got? Is that as tight? Because rural residential allows five, pretty close to fifteen. I'm just wondering if it's an accurate survey, that's all I'm asking. And you're saying it is fourteen point six?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Jen?
Yeah, my, my comments on this case are, first, I just want to thank the adjacent property owners for, for coming here tonight to add some additional information. And I think it gives us some of the temperature of the properties around this one, which back up the due diligence of what Mr. Cox outlined per the zoning ordinance. And, yeah, I regret that we knew, didn't know about the spring until now. That, to me, is an important factor in this piece, particularly with the language about features and the rural character. So without you coming here tonight, we wouldn't have seen that, so I thank you.
Mr. Cox, do you have any other comments before we make a motion? This is in my district. I would just like to say, I concur with Mr. Cox. I, I don't feel it's in accord with, it's not in accord with either the comprehensive plan or the zoning ordinance. And after doing the update for years, this is exactly what we're trying to get away from. And I understand that Chestnut, Chestnut Oaks is right next to it. Chestnut Oaks is a subdivision. It's, that's not comparing apples to apples. This is a, you know, parcel that somebody bought. I mean, there's R two spatterings of R two all throughout the entire county. If we allow it for this, then we could allow it out off of Old River Trail. We could allow it, you know, in District Five, District Four. So, that being said, this is in my district, and in accordance with Article thirty-seven of the Powhatan zoning ordinance, in accordance with public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice, I recommend the planning commission deny the request submitted by Nathan Knuckles to conditionally rezone fourteen point six acres. Any question or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's see, let me get my-
That's it.
That's it. Do we have any, okay. Any other business that came up?
We're into the workshop, right?
Yep. So we move into our workshop. Now, for the workshop, are we gonna have this workshop in here tonight?
If you want to.
Okay. How much do you guys think that we're gonna dig into the comp plan? If you think we're really gonna dig in, I recommend we go next door. If you're not in the mood to really dig in.
I'd like to have more space where we feel like we're around the table and we can really collaborate more on the, on the work.
To get them to set that up.
It's early.
I mean, if it's like gonna take a long time.
Give about ten minutes?
Ten minutes?
And they'll have to set it up.
Okay. All right, we'll take a-
Are y'all going into recess?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Eight-minute break.
That's got to take a paper roll.
Okay.